Thank you, Amanda. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Frank Morales to lead us in an invocation, please.
Eternal Father, we help thee offer thee our four presence and that of the whole of humanity, from beginning to the end of the world, and all the masses that ever have, forever will be praised. We offer thee all the pains, sufferings, prayers, sacrifices, joys, and realizations of our lives, in union with those of our dear loyalties here on earth. May the most precious blood Christ, all his blood and wounds and agony save us, in the sorrowful and immaculate heart of him. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome all of you tonight. Thank you for being here at our meeting. And first item we have is citizen communication.
Mayor, we only have one person. Her name is Linda Nguyen, 2610 Bothwell Road. Regarding previous concerns, she wants to be called.
Shalom?
Hello, this is Nguyen. This is Amanda with the City of Harlingen. You signed up for citizens communication?
Yes, I'm right downstairs. I'm coming up.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
She's coming up, Mayor. She's coming up to speak for her person.
Okay. up to the podium, please, and...
My name is Lyndon Nguyen, and I live at 2610 Bothwell. And I am basically here in support of this battery energy storage facility. I did a lot of research. I had a lot of concerns, and especially over the risks that I assessed that were potential for us in that neighborhood and the people who live in that neighborhood. I shouldn't have used the stairs. Short of breath. Anyway, I kept researching and researching and reading the most latest data. There's a lot of data on the Internet, but some of it, you know, goes back. But I wanted what was most relevant and the newest and the latest concerns regarding these. And I spoke with David, who owns a company, and he has reassured me. He even met with me to show me the plans. And I looked at them and compared them to the ones that I had researched on the Internet and the suggestions that have been made, that if you're going to have one of these, this is the best to do. You know, these are the recommendations. Our state even has recommendations. The fire people, Firemen's Association, or the ones who assess the fires, they have the UIL or the underwriter, laboratories, underwriter, the electricians. I mean, everybody is involved in this effort for green energy, I guess is what you call it, clean energy and safe energy. And there are these storage units around the world, many of them, many are being built. And we have learned from, I think, some of the past mistakes. And because of that, I think we're able to minimize those risks. And...
The two minutes are up, Mayor.
And...
My two minutes are up?
Just go ahead and finish up.
Okay. And I just wanted to say that I think it would be an asset to our community and to Harlingen, and that I feel this very professional building is going to go up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, and that's it for citizen communication. So we're going to go next to presentation of recognition awards. And so we have four tonight. It's really great to be able to recognize these young people here tonight and some that are a little bit older. But the first one is the Harlingen High School Black Guard JROTC Drill Team. If y'all would come on up, please. Welcome. And so we're going to kind of stand here as a benefit picture, but I'm going to, I want to present this award of recognition to you, and I'd like someone to tell us a little bit more about what these fantastic young people did at the competition in Florida, right? So the award recognition, the City of Harlingen congratulates the Harlingen High School Black Guard JROTC Drill Team for exemplary results and outstanding performance at the 2022 National All Services Drill Team Competition at Daytona Beach, Florida. Their determination and confidence brought them a commemorating victory as the national JROTC Drill Champions. So... For you and your school and your drill team, but also thank you for the behalf of the City of Harlingen, because you bring recognition to our city, because people know where Harlingen is now, because you were there at Daytona Beach, Florida, representing us and showing up what the young people of Harlingen do. So you want to ask Sergeant, or you want to tell us?
I'd like to start off and say that it is an honor to be here today and be presented with this pack. We just want to thank the City of Harlingen for their support, and it gave us the determination to win the national champions titleship. And it was an amazing experience for all of us Cadets, and we hope to be back there next year and win the title again.
All right. Congratulations, Kim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Good job.
Oh, thank you.
The next recognition we have is for the Harlingen High School South Hawks Powerlifting Team, Daniela Maximo and Caleb Davis. Do y'all want to come up, join me up here, and your coaches? Is he the student?
Yes.
What grade are yous, huh? Oh, my gosh. You in college? All right, well, let's present these one at a time. City of Harlingen congratulates Caleb Davis for winning the state championship in the super heavyweight pound class totaling 1,970 pounds. At the Texas High School State Powerlifting Competition in Abilene, Texas. Now, that's probably not as far as Daytona Beach, but it was a good competition. So congratulations, Caleb. City of Harlingen congratulates Daniela Maximo for winning the state championship in the 97.5 pounds class for a total of 705 pounds. Texas High School Powerlifting Competition in Corpus Christi, Texas. Congratulations.
Yeah, we can talk a little bit about it. Well, Daniela's probably the lightest division in the state of Texas. She did total probably the highest total in 6A, 5A, 4A, 3A, 2A, the entire state of Texas. So she is the strongest 97.5 pound in the state of Texas, for sure. One of her great topics was, she squatted 285 pounds, she bench pressed 130 pounds, and deadlifted 290 pounds. And that was her total of the 705 pounds. One day about Caleb Davis, she is out. She's in the lightest weight class, he's in the heavyest weight class. Caleb Davis actually broke the school record with a squat of 805 pounds. He could have gone higher. The great story is with Caleb, on his second attempt, tried 805 pound, actually falls back and drops the entire weight on his hand, busting up his finger, which where he couldn't close his hand, you know, and now it's only his second lift of the day, with his, you know, determination, the grit that he has, you know, competed, continued and completed the meet and winning the state championship by 65 pounds. You know, he deadlifted 575 pounds, and he also bench pressed 490 pounds. He did a very good...
Caleb, just want to congratulate you again for bringing the recognition and honor home to your school and to your community. Thank you. We're very proud of you guys.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Water Polo. So if the water polo tape could come on up, there's with their coaches.
Coach, you got to let me know which one's picking up my little girl.
All right, we have this recognition for you all. The City of Harlingen congratulates the Harlingen High School South Lady Hawks Water Polo undefeated district RGV champions, Goldie Elia, Isabel Cereda, Anna Orziski, Isabel Lutrick, Andy Fujan, Daniela Gonzalez, Celestis Zamora, Rihanna Robinson, Sophia Williams, Isabella Hinojosa, Mia Hinojosa, and Mia Gonzalez, for their good sportsmanship, spirit of dedication, and outstanding performance. Here's the captain. Congratulations. The recognition for your school and the City of Harlingen, we're proud of you all. Thank you.
Yes, we do. Are you guys, are you guys mostly sophomores, or what grade are they?
I have a senior, and the rest are junior, sophomores, and freshmen. Oh, I'm sorry, no juniors, sophomores and freshmen.
Juniors, I would know them. My daughter is on the...
What are y'all, what are y'all, they're up pretty good.
My resignation got three fellows, right? We said it happened.
Does anybody have Commissioner Pettis as a teacher?
Until next year.
We're trying to figure out some way to give you extra credit. Castaneda. Coach, the City of Harlingen congratulates Hector Castaneda, Jr., Harlingen High School South Lady Hawks Water Polo Coach of the Year, in appreciation for your exceptional hard work and dedication to your student athletes. Congratulations, Coach.
Yeah, I'm really proud of my girls. We worked hard, and we'll continue to, like I said, we have a young team, so we're going to continue to work next year and hopefully bring it back home again.
Good job, Hector. Good job.
All right, well, that was, that was great, and a lot of fun to be able to recognize these young people for doing outstanding things in our community. Our next item on the agenda is item number two, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 15th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Notion approved.
Second?
All those who have a say, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign the motion carries. Item three is the consent agenda, items A through J. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some would.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, and motion carries. Okay, item four is a presentation by Carl Riggs and Ingram CPAs and advisors regarding the City of Harlingen Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. The Audit Committee did meet on Thursday, April 28th, to go over the audit report in detail. We do have Quentin Anderson and Julio Martinez from CRI CPA to give you a brief overview of the financial audit report.
Sir, can you tell me real quick who's on the Audit Committee?
JV Garcia, Mesmar, Mayor Boswell, Lonan, and Boswell.
Mr. Lonan?
Mm-hmm.
So it's four, four people?
I believe so, yes.
Who was it?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Commission. As Mr. Rodriguez indicated, my name is Quentin Anderson, and I'm, I'm here to prevent you, present you with an overview of the, of the financial information that was included in the audit process. As Mr. Rodriguez indicated, we met with Audit Committee and reviewed the financial statements in detail and, and also provided a letter of recommendations on things that, that we, that we encountered during the audit process. What we've done for tonight is to prepare some charts and slides to, that would help us give you an overview of the financial statement and the report itself. There's nearly 400 pages in detail, so this, this highlight should help us cover some of the key items that you'd find in the report. And I think I, I printed these out for you in the event that the numbers are too small. One thing that we would take you to within your report is on page 20, that you, you have submitted your report to the Government Finance Officers Association, and they've evaluated your, your past reports to determine that, that your report met the standards for excellence in financial reporting. And you, you have historically submitted this report to the GFOA and been successful in receiving that review and that certificate, and that's included within, within your report. I think it's on page 20. What we have in this annual financial report is, this summary will tell you that we've audited the financial statements of the primary government, and that's the city itself, with governmental activities, things like police, fire, public works, public services, and administration, as well as business-type activities, which includes your golf course, the municipal auditorium, the museum, and sanitation services. Also included in the report...
Can you speak a little bit louder? Say it again.
I can try, yeah. Okay, also included in the report, besides the primary government, are discreetly presenting component units. And so the city has Economic Development Corporation, a Community Improvement Board, Harlingen Waterworks System, and Valley International Airport. And so the information in here is included for the primary government, and then some separate statements for the individual component units as well. If you looked in, in your bound report, there's two opinions that have been issued, the independent authors' report's on page 33, and, and as we indicated to the Audit Committee, that the opinion on the financial statements was unmodified, which, which means it's, it says that your financial statements fairly present your financial position and the changes in your financial position during, during the past fiscal period, which is an opinion that you would be expecting to receive as, as commissioners and the Audit Committee would be expecting to receive, and you have historically received an unmodified opinion. Also included in, in the financial report, what it, because it's comprehensive, because you're a governmental entity, and because you're the recipient of some significant grant awards, both federal and state, there's a compliance section that begins back on page 353, and a report that's issued regarding the city's compliance with, with each major program under federal uniform guidance requirements, and also the state of Texas single audit circular. And so what you'd see in that report back on page 355, in our schedule findings, the schedule indicates that, that we did not identify during our audit procedures any material deficiencies in the, in the control processes, and there were no matters of noncompliance reported related to those federal and state grant, grant awards, which is important, equally as important as the financial performance. So I'm going to give you some financial highlights in, to help us cover what's in this, you know, fairly significant report inside. So this first chart will show you, you know, the, a five-year running history of the city's financial position, starting with assets and liabilities and net position. In your bound report, this is on, on page 56 and 57, where the data is taken from. You can see that the city's overall assets have, have grown from 2017 through 2021, increased from 203 million in, in 2020 to 218 million in 2021. A big part of that increase has to do with some significant additional federal grant awards that you received. The city received about $11 million in ARPA funds, a total award of about, a little over 20 million, 22 million, you got half of the award during this fiscal period, and the second half will be coming in during, during this, this current year. And so the unspent portion of that is, it was sitting in, in cash at the end of the fiscal period. And you also had some additional receivables related to, to grant expenditures that you had incurred on various projects that hadn't yet been reimbursed. That's the primary change in, in assets. And liabilities overall were very comparable with the prior year. So what you see is that your net position, which is a measure, you know, can be construed as a measure of, of financial health, has grown from 103 million to 119 million. And again, that's reflected in, in detail on pages 56 and 57. This chart shows you, shows you a comparison of revenues for the past five years for the primary government. And the primary government, again, doesn't include the component unit, so this is just the city by itself. And we see that revenues in the governmental activities have grown, you know, from 64 to 73 million. And a big part of that, as I mentioned, was the additional federal grant awards, and primarily through the ARPA program. And there's some detail on page 58, and on the next chart, which we'll turn to, to give you a breakdown of, of all the different revenues that you had that make up that 73 million. You can see, if you squint, you can see, you know, that you've had, you know, pretty stable amount of hotel motel taxes, 1.2 million dollars. Operating grants and contributions, as we mentioned, they're up from, from the prior year and from years past at 7.6 million dollars.
This is not, this is not a public hearing, and I would prefer that you allow, I would prefer that Mr. Anderson allowed, be allowed to continue his presentation uninterrupted. Go ahead.
Yeah, we'll continue on. Operating grants had a significant increase. Charges for services are a major source of revenue at 9.2 million dollars. Your franchise fees very comparable with the prior year. And you can notice that sales tax revenues increased over the prior year and, and over the, over the years past at 21.8 million dollars. And property tax revenues from 2020 to 2021 have grown by, by about a million dollars, and that was, was primarily a result of changes in property values. I believe the property tax rate actually dropped slightly from the prior year. So capital grants and contributions also have increased from 4 million to 6 and a half million, and, and so some of the grants you receive are for, for infrastructure, capital-related projects, and some are for operations. And so those, if we had a calculator, those numbers would add up to that 73 million dollars, and it has grown, as I mentioned, from the prior year. Business-type activities, the lion's share of that is, is your, your sanitation department. Probably 10 million of the 11 million dollars is, is sanitation, and the rest is, the rest is revenues coming in from the auditorium and, and museums and golf course revenues. And you see golf course revenues grew a little bit from the prior year.
Sir, can I ask you a question right now?
Yes, you can.
You said, you just mentioned the sanitation revenue, right?
Yes, sir.
And it represents how much, how much dollars?
10.3 million dollars in sanitation fund revenues compared to 9.9 the year before.
So when you're doing your analysis on that, you're basic, you're basically just looking at the, making sure we're reporting everything correctly, we're accounting for it correctly, right? But you cannot give an assessment on whether our rates are too high, or we're collecting excess, like there's an excess amount of collections that we're passing on to our citizens? In other words, like if we could reduce our rates? Because to me, it seems like, you know, there's, it's always like a big money, it should lose money, and it's, and it's, I don't feel it should make as much money, because then I understand we take that money, we put it into general fund, right? Or there's some of the excess, right? That's what I understand.
Well, so let me, let me comment in my understanding of that, Commissioner, and that's, that's a good statement. Your statement is fair. No, we don't, we didn't analyze whether or not your rates and charges are, are established at a particularly appropriate amount. And an analysis like that could be done, but that wasn't the scope within, of our service. We were verifying the amounts that were charged and, and the controls over the, over the collection and the accounting for that process. So that's, that's a fair statement. We didn't make that assessment. Those assessments can be made. I would agree, too. You know, your, your goal in any government service is to provide, you know, services to your community at the least cost possible, and, and with an attempt to cover the cost of operations, and that's how business-type activities, so if you, you want to cover the cost of operations. I don't believe that, that the residual net on, on sanitation would necessarily go into the general fund. It would be accumulated in, in fund balance within sanitation.
My observation saying, and my question to you is that when you're analyzing the, the financial data, it's coming in, right?
Yes.
Is it one particular area? Because there's... Because there's several sources of income to that entity, correct?
Yes.
And if you're looking at a spreadsheet, you know, everybody's got X amount of dollars coming in, is it just, is it the primary dollars of that large amount of money come from one particular fund or one particular line item? Or is it across the board?
Well, I would say, but finance can correct me, that most of the revenues in sanitation are coming through garbage collections and the landfill services charges. So, and there are detailed financial statements that can help you see the breakdown of what makes up those within your bound report. There are separate statements on sanitation, the golf course, the municipal auditorium and on the museum. And so you can get some information that will tell you what the operating expenses are and what the overall revenues are. And so the net change, if we had that particular page in front of us...
Commissioner, I could interject. The majority does come from the water bills that we sent out, and that's the sanitation portion of the revenue for the sanitation fund.
And so is that almost, because with the water works, there's a calculation on water runoff, right? And it encourages people to get separate meters for, you know, watering their grass or using their household, right? So there's a calculation that uses that pretty much things that they don't, right?
That's for sure.
Do we have a similar calculation with the trash?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's just to be, and based on the size of the container that is asked for residential, because you don't necessarily have to have, I think it's a 96-gallon container, you can ask for a larger one if you're a residential. So the larger the container, the more you're going to pay in fees for that.
Well, like I said, I'm not a big fan of losing money, but I sure as hell don't want to have such an excess that if we can reduce our rates to our customers, right?
The fund balance also is used to replace the equipment and the trucks.
Trucks, yes.
That the landfill operation, sanitation operation uses. Obviously, we have garbage trucks that move around the city constantly. They have to be replaced. And so the purpose of the sanitation charge is to pay for that operation. Is that a fair statement?
That's true. Commissioner, one of the things I've mentioned before in one of my Friday memos is that we're looking at also adjusting the salaries for some of the drivers, because we're losing them to the private sector. And so some of those excess revenues will be used to pay for that as well.
Right, so I just wanted to see, you know, over the last maybe five years, six years, has it been over $1 million, $2 million? What has that excess been after you buy all the trucks and after you pay all the stuff?
We can...
Because I understand it's very expensive and it's expensive equipment, but...
We can run an analysis for you, sure.
To be able to move money, not a kind of money.
Right. And so what you can't see on that statement...
And Gabe, if I may say something. And the price of diesel fuel hit an all-time high this week. And our trucks use diesel or regular?
No, they use diesel.
They use diesel, okay. So the costs have gone up in the year 50%, 60%.
But we also have storage tanks that reduce that cost. That's why we buy the storage tanks. We buy in bulk and we buy in volume and we get a discounted rate. We don't buy like the public. Are our costs heavy?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the futures. Diesel futures.
Gentlemen, one at a time. I think Mr. Mesmer has the floor. Do you want to continue?
I'm just pointing out that the price of equipment has gone up dramatically because of all the inflation. The price of diesel fuel has gone up. We don't buy it at a discount. We buy it at what the rate of diesel fuel is. And that to any shop, including the city of Harlingen, the price of diesel fuel has gone up to an all-time high. And when we buy, even in our storage tanks, we're buying at higher prices.
Okay. And with all due respect, sir, I would hope you would take the same consideration for our citizens, because they deal with the same things you just mentioned. Food costs, labor costs, their jobs.
And you realize up there...
Hold on, I have the floor.
You're right.
All right? So you have to give our citizens the same consideration you're giving our shop. We're all the same people. We all have the same consideration. All I'm asking, and it's a simple question, and it's, we don't even have the answer, but is there a way to reduce our rates that we're passing on to our customers? Because things are getting very expensive and the less we can charge our customers, the better. That we shouldn't have, that we should absolutely cover our costs, but we shouldn't have such a large excess.
Right.
But go ahead, sir.
And this up here is the revenue. It's not the net.
Right. Okay. So, and Commissioner, those are good points. I'm going to jump back to the expense side of this, a couple of slides, because as you mentioned, we see in the revenues, okay, and then in the business-type activities, the lion's share of the expenditures are also in sanitation. So at over $10 million in revenues, $9.6 in expenses, the surplus that you mentioned for the year was about $800,000 to quantify that. And this comes out off of page 58 in the report. What you don't have the benefit of is, well, you do, but the citizens don't. Page 274 is a cash flow statement for sanitation. And there's actually $2,520,000 of equipment purchased during the fiscal period. So cash didn't grow. You used about, out of $8 million in cash in the fund, you know, cash changed by about $260,000. So, but, and so some years, equipment purchases are greater than others and you have to measure what an appropriate amount of reserve is. You know, you're correct in saying, you know, you shouldn't accumulate more than you need to, because it comes at the cost of citizens paying their garbage bill for the most part.
And I think this is a good discussion to have at budget time or prior to budget time. And, but, so let's, unless somebody's got a question directed at the audit itself, I think we should let Mr. Anderson continue.
With that, we were looking at the revenue analysis on business-type activities and, you know, the bulk is sanitation, a little bit more in golf course. And here's an expenditure analysis. And so, you know, the lion's share of expenditures for the government comes in in public safety, as you might expect, will be a primary role of our government. You have expenditures in highways and streets and health and welfare. And this chart kind of helps you break down, you know, the different categories of expenses. This comes from page 58 in the financial statements. This was a sheet where we're just on looking at expenditures for the business-type activities. Sanitation having $9.6 million in prior year, about $8.9 million. And then the last chart I presented was kind of a running recap of, you know, the general fund balance, which would kind of represent, you know, the general fund being your primary budgeted fund, you know, establishes a measure of, you know, health for the community. So the general fund balance has grown from 2019 to 2020 to 2021 to a balance of about $28 million. Some of that's restricted. Page 59 in the report will show you the unrestricted balance. I think that was probably around $24 million. And your disclosures in your transmittal letter, I want to say it indicates about 180 days of reserve. This was the last chart that I put together of some of the key components of your financial statement that would represent, you know, kind of the health of the community. So I'll be glad to address any other questions that you might have. We did spend a lengthy amount of time with the audit committee in going through the whole financial statement.
Sir, anywhere in this binder, is the TERS funding in here somewhere? Under what section?
Yes. On page 70, there's a list of all the non-major governmental funds, which are special revenue funds, and both, page 170, and both TERS funds are included in that section.
So is there one...
Zone 1, Zone 2 and Zone 3.
Okay, yeah, so there's three TERS zones, correct?
Yes, sir. And so on page 172, 173, that section of the financial statement will tell you, actually you have to go to 176, 177 if you want to see revenues and expenses. But that combining statement for your non-major funds shows those amounts in each of those various zones.
And you have them separated?
You present them as separate individual funds for financial reporting purposes and they're combined with all the non-major governmental funds. And so you have some funds that are considered major just by the size of the fund, you know, the general fund, some capital projects funds, some other funds. And then all the smaller funds are added together and considered aggregate remaining fund information. So those funds are segregated in the financial reporting of the city and they're presented here separately in that section of the report as one of the components of non-major governmental funds.
Okay, so if you can just, because I've asked a few different people in the city to explain to me how that TERS works, can you just, I guess, give me the correct answer or the basic version of what those zones were set up for and how we're supposed to spend the money and how much money we have?
I can, I'll do my best at that. If you take a look at page 177, Zone 1 has a fund balance of $586,000 and Zone 2 has a fund balance of $808,000 and Zone 3 has a fund balance of $200 and almost $34,000. I would assess that to be, that's the funds you have accumulated. At the end of this fiscal period, I can't tell you and apologize what Zone 1 is and what Zone 2 is and what Zone 3 is. I don't know which one's which. But my understanding of the nature of the revenues in those funds is what you're doing with those funds is your, and what makes them a tax increment reinvestment zone is that you've committed the extra taxes that are collected from the appreciation and value in those zones to be reinvested within those zones. That's my understanding of the purpose of a TERS zone.
And it's for public infrastructure only, Commissioner?
Right. So that there can be economic, the benefit of the extra taxes collected from appreciation in those zones would go into the infrastructure in those zones to encourage development within those zones. That's my understanding of a TERS.
So you're able to identify whether we are doing that appropriately or not, whether we're reinvesting the monies that came into that one zone, if it's being reinvested correctly into that zone? Are you able to, as far as, is there a reporting, right? Is a reporting has to happen? And is it a fund that continues to grow as far as there's still money going into it? Or is it one, it's just constant, right?
Yes, sir.
Right. So when we do our reporting and you look at that reporting, you're able to validate to make sure that Zone 1 is doing what it's supposed to be doing, Zone 2 is, all three zones are doing what they're supposed to be doing and we're not commingling the funds or mixing them up or...
Right. So what I can tell you is that, you know, you're separately accounting for the income and expenses of each of those zones internally and that because they're combined in a whole host of other smaller non-governmental funds, you know, the scope of our audit procedures probably don't spend a lot of time individually looking at expenditures within the TERS zone, right? And so if we...
Okay, so let me ask it a different way.
Okay.
Do we have any steps in place to make sure, to ensure that we are expending those monies appropriately and not mixing the monies or having the possibility of mixing the monies?
Yeah.
I mean, are they in separate bank accounts? Is it on the general fund? Is it just on paper?
They are separated.
What procedures do we have in place to make sure that we don't mix the funds?
Yeah. They are separated within your books and records to maintain the integrity of the accumulated balances within the fund, so.
Commissioner, TERS 1 and 2 have only had one project. TERS 3 has had multiple projects. The balances are still growing. TERS 1 has about $1 million, one point, as Quentin just mentioned.
But we have stuff in place to make sure that 1 stays in 1 and 2 stays in 2.
Right, there was, right. There's only one project that actually took funds from the TERS, but we had a legal opinion saying that that could be done. I can get you copies of that if you'd like to look at it. It was used for the convention on TERS 3. So we took funding from TERS 1, 2 and 3 to fund that, only the land acquisition.
Okay, so I understand. And see, that was, that's where I was trying to go. I was understanding that if we did that, we have to reimburse that money into those TERS zones that we're not supposed to have taken the money out of.
Um...
And it's okay, I mean, I'm not aware.
Yeah, I'll get you that. As long as you spend on the public infrastructure, you don't have to reimburse the funding. Now, if you provide, in some cases, you can ask a developer that you help them with public infrastructure to pay back into the TERS, but...
Yeah, but again, if one, whatever the 1 is and whatever 2 is, if the money is restricted only to spend into that, how is it that we bring money from the other TERS into it? That would seem improper, right?
Well, I think the city...
And again, you know, I'd like to make sure that we get, that we don't have to put that money, right? Because those monies are put away for purposes. And if it's retail or medical or industrial, we want to make sure we keep that money to grow in its purpose. If we're putting it all together and shipping it out to a project, that doesn't work for me, right?
Yeah, I'll look for the documentation to show how they got that approved. And I'll provide it for you, please.
All right. So have any other questions for Quentin?
Yes, so Quentin, did you, following up, did you find any skalduggery?
I'm not sophisticated enough to define that properly.
Okay, okay. Did you find any illegal behavior? Of course, we have the FBI, ex-FBI agents coming up, but...
So we did not. And page 355 in the report recaps the results of our compliance.
And so we passed with flying colors?
You complied with the laws and regulations that were associated with the grant awards that you were charged with. You didn't have deficiencies and our opinion was not modified.
Okay. And so our city management and our finance department come through with flying colors. We did well.
That's a good way to say it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Quentin? All right. So thank you very much for the presentation and there's no further action on this presentation. It was a clean opinion, so thank you very much. And congratulations, I want to say, to the finance department and to our city management staff for getting us through that. It's always, I'm sure you like doing it every year. It must be fun. But one of the things that was stated again in the affir was that the information was provided readily to the audit team and that you all were very cooperative and good to work with and you were complimented on giving the information to the audit team and being very transparent and helpful to them to get the audit prepared. So thank you all for doing that. Item 5 is the presentation and possible action on staff's responses to the SAFE Global Services Audit.
Mayor, members of the commission, in your packet was a copy of staff's response to the SAFE report that they provided. I'm not going to go over our responses in totality. I'm just going to cover a few of them that we think we should mention as to what our actions are going to be. The first is the, they mentioned that we didn't have signed pledge collateral from the Federal Home Loan Bank Board. We were able to get that into our records for the one CD that we have, so we're going to make certain that for future CDs and if we use other banks as well...
What did you call that, sir? Signed pledge collateral?
Signed pledge collateral from the FHLB.
No, we didn't have it.
We, the city didn't have a copy, I would hear, but when they asked for it, we were able to get it from them. It's from the Federal Reserve.
Okay.
The others that, they mentioned that the investment policy had some changes in prior years that were not brought to the commission. We're going to bring that back to the commission, whether there's changes or not annually to have the commission approve the investment policy. The others that staff is going to prepare a cost analysis for having a third-party consulting agency look at our CDs. What I'd like to do is compare the rates that they might charges as compared to the rate that we might earn from the CD and see, just present it to the commission to see if it's something that you want to continue to do in the future. Right now, we're not using a third-party consulting agency staff, just does that cause out banks and we get rates in-house. Now, Water Works, they did point out...
You don't want to spend $10,000 to make $5,000, right?
Well, that's why I want to point out, that's what the numbers are.
I mean, I don't... I mean, I don't know what it is, but I mean, we don't want to spend more money on a third-party consultant than we make than we actually make on the CD, right?
Right, that's that's the reason for the.
That's the benefit to just doing it in-house, is we don't have to spend that extra money.
Right now, they did point out, though, that Water Works does have a third-party consulting agency they use, but I don't know how many CDs they have. They may have more than we do. We just have the one. They may have more. I'm not.
Who do they use?
Tim told me who that was, but I don't remember, Commissioner.
There it is, Valley View.
That's Water Works.
Yes. The others that, the commission did approve the SAFE keeping agreement, and I indicate that we're going to have one in place. It was approved this year, January 19th, 2022, but we put that process on hold until SAFE could complete their their review. We're going to send that to Hilltop Securities to have them look at it, because one of the things that we'd like to do with that in place is start investing in securities, Treasury bills, and so once they do that, we'll get the the agreement signed and in place. The other issue that they had, SAFE addressed their their concerns through in two ways. One, they they provided an issue, and then they issued their finding, and we responded to the findings. And this particular issue was number 10. They did state that the findings of the audit are not available to the public. And in, as we just covered, the the affair, if there are any findings, they're in the single audit section. And if you go back to that section here, it'll say if there are any findings that are state or federal. And this one says no. So it'll it'll say on there that that there are no findings in this report that was submitted to the city. So I just want to point that out as clarification, because I think there may have been some misunderstanding and nomenclature that was used by staff in discussing this issue with with SAFE. Their finding was that that the audits, they actually meant to say that that the management letter was not in available to the public. Instead, they called it a finding, and so I just want to point out that that if there are findings, they're noted in the in the financial report. And that we did say that that the management letter, we couldn't find any city in the valley that actually provided that on the on their website. The important document is to provide this, make this available to the public, because that includes our our financial position, any changes in revenue, expenditures. So this is really the the important issue, not the management letter, because the management letter is mostly of what we provided to them, what they asked for, what we addressed, and so the this report is the one that's more important. So that's our response. I covered the highlights, important things that I think I needed to point out. The rest was just, it was important, and we're going to continue to monitor the finances, but I think these are the issues that I needed to address publicly with you.
Now, Mr. Sanci, have you looked at the investment report and given your recommendations on how to change that policy?
I I've reviewed it, yeah. I mean, I've I've been working with the city manager and 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 in agreement with what his.
And and you think it's something that you can put together in the next couple meetings, or as far as recommendation, taking those recommendations, put them in and and get them implemented?
Yeah, I mean, I'm working with the city manager.
We do have a financial investment report that we that we have, that we're going to bring to you. The last time was it was approved in 2021. We're going to send the SAFE keeping agreement to Hilltop Securities. If they make any changes, I'll give them to Mark for him to look at, and then we'll bring that back to you for approval this year. So, well, you'll see a copy of it later later this year.
So once again, there was no skullduggery on the part of the city management or the finance department. There was no illegal behavior on the part of the city management or the finance department, and I say thank you to Commissioner Rini Pettis for not voting to waste away $80,000 of taxpayers' money that could have gone into paving roads or drainage issues, flood issues. Instead, this was a no-bid contract initiated by Commissioners One, Two, and Four, looking for criminal activity where none exists.
Well, let me answer that, Mike.
I'll tell you what.
No, no, never, give me a second, because I want to make sure I get this off, because I wanted to make sure I gave them the opportunity to speak. In 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 that report, okay, in 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 this investigation, it also came out that our finance director wanted to move $30 million of our money into Texas Regional Bank. That decision alone, to to make that that, to to have that kind of, in Spanish, that confianza, to say, you know what, I'm going to move $30 million of our our city money into Texas Regional Bank, is absolutely ridiculous without having any kind of person to verify, check, double-check, make sure it's okay. It's okay, it may not be illegal, but I don't want somebody making that kind of decision, even that kind of thought tells me they're not qualified, okay? So so to make that determination, and then then the other troubling finding was, he lied? Okay, he said he shopped off the banks. He did not. Okay, let me let me put it this way. It's almost like lawyer talk. They spin it, and they said, well, I really didn't lie. I I went out for proposal in in June, and I got three banks, and I got their their rates. But then when you move the money in September, you actually only went to one bank, not even the same three banks. You didn't even give the other three banks who made the initial offer to to put into CDs, you didn't even give them an opportunity to 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 bid on our money. You just called one bank, and the law says you have to at least call one other. And if you're that lazy to not call one other bank on a phone call to say, you know what, what is your rate? Can I document it? Being transparent and saying, I'm about to move $5 million of the city's money, I probably should document that, and I probably should cover myself and say, here are the rates, and be very transparent. But we can't even do that. Now, is it illegal? They they're saying it's not. Should it happen? No, we should have things in place to better protect our city's money. Nobody should have, including this commission, should not have the ability to move that kind of money on a whim because they think it's a great rate. And then on top of that, I, like I told you all, that sometimes, because this all happened during COVID, and and so it's very, it's very easy to say, oh, it's just a great rate, it's four times the money. Everything went to zero, okay? What you, what they, what he could not answer is saying, how long did it stay at zero? When did it come back up? Sometimes the best action is not to take action and say, you know what, I'm going to hang on to the city's money a little bit. When did the rates get back to normal? Because at that time, that was the thing. But that particular bank went and hired, not not a banker, they went and hired a city manager to go out and hunt for money. And I don't blame him, because the guy was doing his job, but he's going to go and and do creative financing and go create, and and his relationships with other cities and say, come move your money into this bank. That's not fair to the to the city, that's not fair to the bank, and that's not proper. So we have to have things in place to make sure we do not have the ability to move that kind of money, because because we we've given them that authority.
All right.
So I don't regret.
Is there anything else? Is there anything else?
I don't have anything else, Commissioner.
All right, and that concludes that, that concludes that matter.
Just one more comment, Mayor, if you don't mind. Mesmer, Commissioner Mesmer, I I just wanted to clarify, I did not vote for this audit to find any illegalities. I it's it's our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that everything is done on the up and up. And so, and I did state in the paper that one of the reasons that I wanted to do this audit was to find ways to improve the current system and to make it a better a better outcome for for the taxpayers, more importantly. So just for clarification, I never ever mentioned anything about illegalities. It was more of just to make sure that we're we can find ways to improve the our procedure. Thank you.
Just for clarification, sounds like two guys are running for office again. And and you, you really wasted $80,000 of drainage and street money.
It wasn't a waste. It was not a waste. We we found, they're going to find improvement.
How much time did you spend the last couple of weeks with the with the finance director? Because I understand you were coming every day and spending hours of of your time, and I and I appreciate that.
That's a lie.
I I appreciate you spending time.
That is a hundred percent lie.
Okay.
Okay.
So are are city staff are liars now?
All right, well, let's, we need to talk about this item. This item is the is management's response to Global SAFE report. Does anybody want to talk about this item? If they don't, then let's go on to the next item.
All right.
Item six, consideration possible action to approve resolution accepting the anticipated Federal Aviation Administration grant, offer number 3-48-0101-070-2022, in the amount of $2,693,675. Marv, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Happy to present that we have just received recently a grant from the FAA. This is a grant that is out of the infrastructure money. We're going to receive a grant just about the same amount for the next five years, this year and four more additional years. So it's above and beyond the normal AIP Airport Improvement Program grant. This grant is going to be utilized to actually finish out our passenger jet bridge project. We finished first first phase with a couple of years ago with replacing jet bridge number four and adding a new bridge on jet bridge number one. This project will, we will actually replace jet bridge number five that Southwest use is, it needs to be replaced. It'll actually replace jet bridge number two and add an additional jet bridge at jet bridge number three or gate number three that didn't have one before. On April 19th, the Airport Board voted unanimously to accept this grant and made recommendation to this this body, commission, to do the same. Take any questions?
Is there a motion to approve the resolution accepting the FAA grant?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Okay, good work to Marv and and your staff, your team over at the airport.
Thank you.
In securing the grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, consideration possible action to approve resolution accepting Valley International Airport's mid-year budget amendment for 2021, 2022.
Mayor, Commissioners, on the April 19th, the Airport Board had approved the the mid-year budget update, and it also made recommendations for this body. I do have, really, really quickly, I can tell you that the revenue that we're we're recovering from COVID, we actually were $868,000 favorable in revenue of what we anticipated during the 2022 budget. Our expenses rose a little bit, about $143,000, and that was due to the increase in employments that we had at the airport. Of course, with more passengers comes more more items, restroom and types of materials that we need in order to to accommodate the extra traffic. So overall, our net income for the year was, or compared to our budget 2022, was $724,601. I am prepared to go over in depth. I have some slides, I believe, that they should be up there. If we want to, we want to go over those in depth, or we can, you know, I can answer any questions about the 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 mid-year that you've received.
I like the motion for an approval, Mayor.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eight, consideration possible action to accept or deny the donation of one park bench to the City of Harlingen from John Anthony Moreno family to be placed at the Hugh Ramsey Nature Park in memory of Mr. John A. Moreno.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. The Moreno family approached us, and they wanted to donate a park bench, and they would purchase it, we would install it, and and they want to place it at the Hugh Ramsey Nature Park in memory of their their dad, John Anthony Moreno. Mr. Moreno was avid birder of Hugh Ramsey, and so they felt it was appropriate to to donate this this bench and asked us to install it there at the Hugh Ramsey Nature Park. It'll be similar to what's already there, so it will look out of place.
Motion for approval.
Any other discussion? Is anyone from the Moreno family here tonight?
No, sir.
No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. We want to express our deep appreciation to the Moreno family for this generous gift to the Hugh Ramsey Nature Park.
I'll let them know, sir.
Item nine, consideration possible action to approve the bylaws for the Harlingen Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission. We've we've been meeting with the Park Advisory Board and bringing up not issues, but several things that we should be following, certain guidelines as a board. And so we felt that it was appropriate that we create these bylaws for the advisory board. And so we worked on them, we presented them to the advisory board on March 22nd, 2022, and they voted unanimously to to approve the bylaws that are presented to y'all this evening. We have, we had some requirements in the ordinance, so what we did was we we injected those ordinance guidelines into the bylaws, so so they coincide with each other. Staff recommends the approval. If you have any questions, I can try to answer those.
Anybody have any questions on these amendments? If not, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 10, consideration possible action to approve an ordinance in first reading for a special use permit to allow battery storage energy facility in a general retail GR district located in property along the east side of Tucker Road, approximately 500 feet south of Lincoln Avenue, bearing a legal description of 4.592 acres out of 5.380 acres out of Block One, Howard Dixieland Heights subdivision.
Mayor, City Commissioners.
And this item was tabled on 4/20/22, so we'll need a motion to remove from the table.
Motion to remove from the table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the item is back on the table. Come here.
Yes, if you remember, the the lady that was in opposition spoke in support of the SUP, so this item is for your consideration.
I went ahead and, on Monday, because I, thank you for tabling it last time we were here. I I asked you guys to table it, because I had like a little mini Q and A at the location, and we had some of the residents that were going to be affected showed up, and then Mr. David came came by too, and he was there. He explained all, he answered all the questions that they had. He answered any concerns they might have had as well. And the two main people that were against it are no longer against it, and overall, I'm going to go ahead and vote to approve this.
Motion approved.
Do we need to read the caption?
Yes.
It's an ordinance.
I guess we can. A public hearing to consider an ordinance at first reading for a special use permit to allow battery storage energy facility in their retail district located at a property along the east side of Tucker Road, approximately 500 feet south of Lincoln Avenue, bearing a legal description of 4.592 acres out of 5.380 acres out of Block One, Howard Dixieland Heights subdivision.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
Sir, I'd like to thank Mr. Rini for taking the time out to creating that, to make it for that extra step for the citizens that are that were going to be affected, even if it's just two. And also the gentleman from the company. I can't see you, but I know you're there, right? Sir, if you don't mind, I understand that, I know it's sometimes tough, and I'm sure you know this in other cities, tough to 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 get in front of us and ask stuff, but to take your time to to take that extra step to make the people feel comfortable, because it's a long-term investment, speaks volumes of 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 your company and whatnot, and to be able to show that you want to do the right thing. So I think that went a long way to 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 really remove any doubt of the intentions of what your company has in the long term. So I appreciate that, because it's all new. It's all, I mean, it's all new technology, right? And it's all changing. It's like when the windmills came in, and there's going to be a, then a thousand questions. So I appreciate you being patient and taking the extra step, and and again, Mr. Pettis, take it, take it your time, I know you're busy, so it was good, and 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 I think it's going to be a good thing.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Any other discussion?
I have one question for Mr. Seton. Yes, sir. In this filing we're looking at, the Eastside Buildup, is that, or could that ever be referred to as spot zoning?
No. No, this is a special use permit. It's allowed in that zoning.
If it's not, we're, I'm good to go.
Commissioner, I've reviewed this. It's not spot zoning. It's a perfect use of a special use permit.
Okay, I also want to thank the developer and and the residents, Miss Quinn, for Ms. Quinn, for talking to each other and working this out. I think it was a beautiful resolution for this project and for the residents. So thank you very much for doing that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 11, board appointments.
I have none. I have none, Mayor.
For the Tax Improvement Finance Board.
Can, Reenie Pettis had a surprised look on his face. Question, I guess, question for the lawyer. Is that kosher?
I'm good. I'm good. Yes. When do the meetings help?
After 5:00.
After 5:00? Okay, I'm good.
Okay, is there, is there a motion to approve the board appointments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 12, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 651.072 regarding the purchase lease or value of real estate as the corporation is hoping to meet with a detrimental effect on the position of the City of Harlingen in negotiations with a third party regarding some of the projects. And Texas Government Code 651.087 regarding commercial financial information from business prospects with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations. Senator, discuss for deliberate financial or other incentives relating to the following projects, project travel and project sheets. Is there a motion to go in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.